Easy. Let's avoid that word up here. I know. One more minute.
Recording in progress.
Well, my phone is showing five thirty, and this is the regular city council meeting on May ninth, two thousand twenty-two. I'm going to call this meeting to order. May we have a roll call of the council?
Councillor Long, here. Runyon.
Here.
Randall.
Present.
Councillor Richardson.
Present.
Councillor McLaughlin, who is serving as president of the chamber of the council tonight, and the mayor is absent.
All right. Well, I've asked Councilman Randall, Scott Randall, to say the pledge tonight. Go ahead, Scott.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
A little digital delay. We go into, since there's no presentations or proclamations tonight, we'll go into number six, audience participation. During this portion of the meeting, any may, yes?
Sorry.
Oh, yeah, let's go back and pick that up, please. I bypassed number four, which is the approval of the agenda. Everyone has had a chance to look at the agenda. Do we have a motion?
I'll move to approve the agenda with the supplemental agenda adding item nine to the consent agenda. The resolution number twenty-two dash zero-one-nine, accepting the appointment of Mayor Mays to the House Bill forty-one twenty-three Advisory Committee.
Thank you.
We have a motion as amended. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of accepting the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Now, we go past the presentation proclamations and go to audience participation. During this portion of the meeting, anyone may speak on any subject which does not later appear on the agenda. Up to five minutes per person will be allowed. Citizens are encouraged to ask questions with the understanding that the city can either answer the question tonight or refer that question to the appropriate staff member who will get back to you within a reasonable amount of time. If a response by the city is requested, the speaker will be referred to the city manager, Daniel Hunter, for further action. The issue may appear on future meeting agendas for city council consideration. Do we have anyone that would like to speak? Yes, sir. Would you come on up to the microphone, state your name and your address? Pull that mic closer to you.
My name is Patrick Wilburn.
We got, well, turn it on. On the button on the end.
My name's Patrick Wilburn. I reside at eleven twelve Pemberton Street, the Dells, Oregon. I would like to address the esteemed members of the city council. The reason why I am here today is not only a citizen of the Dells, I'm representing the Oregon Military Order of Purple Heart. I am the junior vice commander for the Military Order of Purple Heart in the state of Oregon. The proposal that I am sending to you guys today is to make the city of the Dells a Purple Heart city. This is at no cost to the city or county entity. What this is for is to show the veterans, not only of Wasco County and the city of the Dells, that they show their contribution to their not only service, but to some of them that have lost their lives in battle and gave us the highest honor that they probably do to this, to our government. Like I said, it's at no cost to the government. The Military Order of Purple Heart provides all the signs, provides all the everything. Just need to make sure to see whether the city would like to have the proposal and be a Purple Heart city. This is a mission that I have taken on as a newly appointed junior department commander. And I'm hopefully going to bring it to more cities and the rest of the thirty-six counties in the state of Oregon. Thank you for hearing me today, and thank you very much.
Any questions?
Is provided material to IZETI that will come back in the form of a proclamation, whatnot, for another, for another meeting?
Kind of signage, Patrick?
So the signage is provided by the Rhodes, it's working in correlation with the Rhodes Department and the Purple Heart Trail. So it's a subsidiary of the Military Order of Purple Heart that wants to advocate and show so that basically it's an official sign that both, that all states have agreed upon. I have a example right here. Now, depending on how, however anybody wants it, there's a couple of different examples of it. It'll say, you know, Purple Heart City will either say the Dells or whatever area you'd like to put on it. They're either white, they're purple, but they're usually no bigger than eight and a half by twelve, I believe. They can be requested to be bigger upon the department if you guys would like to display it bigger, but they do have some standardized signage that they do use.
Thanks.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I don't know if Patrick mentioned it or not, but he is a Purple Heart recipient.
Yes, I am also a Purple Heart resident. Wasco County veteran service. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Mr. Arigus, would you like to present?
Sure.
Pull that mic over, then we can hear on Zoom.
Stand you a few of these.
Of course.
Good evening, council members. I'm here. I'm here in I'm here representing the Fort Dells Fourth. And I sent an email to everybody, all council members, this weekend, and I didn't know if everyone had an opportunity to see that or not. I have a copy of it with me. I've included a copy in that packet I've given. In lieu of saving time, we wouldn't necessarily need to read that email. But basically, I'm here to, to address some concern regarding the proposed budget that was approved for the Fort Dells Fourth. And how it was slashed back. Like I said, I could get into the email, but basically what had happened is it was twenty-five hundred, or twenty-five thousand dollar proposed budget that I was under the impression through goodwill from Julie Krueger that was going to be approved. I was never at any point, anybody from the committee asked to, that it was important that I come to a budget meeting or even requested that it would be a good idea to come to a budget meeting. And that didn't happen. I also submitted the submitted a P and L to Julie that apparently didn't arrive to the budget meeting either. The biggest thing I wanted to include in that email or in that packet really is the Fort Dells Fourth Committee. Everybody that's on the committee and their contact info. At that budget meeting, it was implied that that we weren't being upfront and honest about our financial, like, no, honest, should I say honest? I should say more upfront than willing to reveal our monies and where we're at. And that is not true. We have, like I said, a P and L and a QuickBooks that more than willing to share with the council. And actually, I would like an opportunity at some point that he could address the council individually or as a group to discuss the matter. And we're just looking for a good event, more than willing to share all the financial. And make sure that we're as honest and transparent with our funding. You know, with this, the city's help, you know, we've had great support through the committee for the committee, but through the, through the residents and through businesses, and it's just an event that can't be pulled off without the city's, city's support as well, so. Yes, I guess that's really all I need to tell you. Like I said, I'm, I'm interested to meet with all of you individually or as a group. Go over what we proposed and what, what we'd like to accomplish with this event and how important that fully budgeted amount is for us. Anybody have any questions or? And I know this isn't the time or the place for you to come up with any kind of solutions to our problem, you know? But like I said, I just want to be open and honest about it, the whole, the whole committee does.
Questions, yes?
Well, I'll just make a comment. So I appreciate this information, and I think that obviously we had a transition with our city manager who talked to you, transitioning out prior to the budget meeting, and I think if Julie had still been here, she could have given us this information and let us know that you had provided it, and that would have made a difference. You know, for me. I don't know, I mean, the budget isn't final because the city council has to vote on it. And so we still have time to figure out what we want to do as a council, whether it's keep it the same or add some money back in for you. So I just, I just wanted to clarify that because, like you said, you did present it, and we just didn't get it.
Other questions? I have several. One. So what you're doing is you're requesting fifteen thousand to be reinstated mainly because you've signed a contract for the fireworks that is upcoming this year.
Correct, and that's all in that email that I presented to you that, yeah, yes. So we, we signed a contract for fifty thousand dollars under the assumption that we were raising the twenty-five and the city would participate in the other twenty-five thousand.
All right, so I think we'll direct this to the incoming city manager. Because Matthew and I have spoken, and he's fully aware of your commitment, and we're willing to sit down and not negotiate, but will listen to your request for fifteen thousand dollars to reinstate so that the fireworks can go ahead. So.
And like in that packet, there is both, both my, my correspondence with Julie on not only this year's event, but last year's event that shows you her confidence that things would happen, and in no way in that did she ever ask me to propose that, so.
Sometimes things like this do happen, especially in transitions.
Sure, sure.
So what our intent is to come back to fair, and we don't want to leave you in a lurch. So what we'll do is we'll, we accept your request and we'll process it and get back to you.
Sure, appreciate it.
That, thank you.
Thank you, Matt.
All right. Any other audience participation? Here's your opportunity. You have five minutes. Yes, please come forward, and if you would state your name and your address.
Steve Timmons, one five two seven East Eighteenth Street. And I'm primarily here just to reiterate and support what Matt said. I am a new committee member on the Fort Dells fireworks, and I'm pretty meticulous about being on other committees, how money is spent, especially when it's benefiting the community. Very competent and can tell you that none of it is going anywhere except towards the fireworks. For the past several years, we've had many family members, we've had visitors come to our home to watch the fireworks. And three years ago after that point, our business decided to contribute to be a primary sponsor in this. It brings fabulous opportunity to our community, and I do think there was miscommunication that occurred through this. I guess, just adding to this, I think it would be helpful what the city's intention is, not only this year, and hopefully you would reinstate that fifteen thousand, but also for future years, so that we, as a committee, can determine, you know, what our responsibility is and what we need to do. I'm primarily just here to support Matt and the whole committee.
Thank you. All right. Anyone else? All right, hearing or seeing none, we'll go ahead and move on. Finished. Let's go to city manager report.
Thank you. Just a reminder to council, we've got a new police officer. He starts on Thursday, but we'll be swearing in at one PM on Friday. Canyon Reams is his name. One o'clock Friday. Police Department. Come to the swearing in. I have two other items that were part of an approved funding from Safe Funds, and that was the camera system that was installed at the police department and some on City Hall. And that was originally approved at thirty-six thousand one hundred eighty-five dollars, and the total cost came in at forty thousand seven seventy-eight. And the other piece of that is we had a approved request for fourteen thousand four hundred dollars for new vests and carriers for police officers, and the total cost on that came in at eighteen thousand five hundred. So I just wanted to make sure council was comfortable with increasing those amounts. The numbers are, or the contractors have already been paid on the camera system, but the vests have not yet been ordered. Both of these increases will result in about five thousand remaining in that budget line, and I have no anticipation of further expenditures on that this year. And that's my report.
Thank you. Council member reports. Darcy Long, would you like to begin?
Sure. So you're okay with the extra spending?
We're asking for a request. Back and discuss this.
What, what's the total, Daniel? Above and what we were expecting on those two items?
So on the, on the camera system, it's going to be four thousand six hundred dollars more, and on the vests, it will be four thousand one hundred dollars more.
This would just increase the line items and the budget that we have already considered for the coming fiscal year?
No, this is for deductions to the safety line item in council's budget.
Thank you.
All right. My question always, do we have the money to cover this? All right. That's the important question. So what is your pleasure? Let's make a motion, or do we need a motion to do consensus? Consensus? What's a consensus? Councillor Randall, what's your?
I agree.
All right. I also agree. All right, so it's, it's a consensus of the city council that we approve your request. Is there anything else before I move on? All right. Let's go on now to city council reports.
So in the last couple of weeks, I met with the Dells Main Street and talked to them about some proposals they have for the next year. I also attended the budget meetings, the same as all the other counselors, and that lasted three nights this year. And the recommendation for the budget is coming forward to city council, so if you're not familiar with the process, that means it will come before city council future day, I'm not sure exactly which June thirteenth, and then council will vote on it or make changes before we vote on it at that time. And that is my report.
I'm going to pass on the report tonight, and I move to my left, Councillor Richardson.
Same as all the other counselors, I think. Much reading and discussion and meetings on the budget in the last couple of weeks.
Right. And Councillor Runyon.
Budget Committee, of course, tended the ribbon cutting for Dirt Hugger out to the west end of town now, a part of our community and taxpayer now in the city limits. I don't know if they are still going to have their facility across the river for the production part or not.
It's cross river. And the, the Dells will be.
Yep. And Don Hurt left the community of the Dells after twenty-four and a half years, and I attended that little get together out at Casa El Mirador, and good time was had by all, wish her well, she's still in town, working from home. She'll travel to eastern Oregon as the eastern Oregon LCDC representative periodically, but most of her work will be done right here. So we haven't watched her as a citizen, we've just had her, seen her get a promotion to the state of Oregon. And then today, the Mid Columbia Veterans Memorial Committee met, and following that, had the conversation with Patrick that brought him here tonight, and I can't wait to move forward on his request.
Conclude.
That's it.
Councillor Randall.
Thank you, Councilor McLaughlin, or should I call you President McLaughlin? Other than the Budget Committee, on April twenty-ninth, the Historic Landmarks Commission approved two separate requests for modifications and restoration work to buildings on Second Street and Fourth Street, and that's all I have.
All right. Thank you.
I'm sorry, I forgot that I was going to mention something I forgot at the last meeting, actually. We talked a lot about Cherry Festival, and I think I realized after I went home that we actually didn't acknowledge that the Dallas Chamber of Commerce puts that on with their small staff. And so I just wanted to make sure that everybody knows that that big event is actually a big fundraiser for the chamber, their main one of the year, and they also put that entire thing on, so we didn't mention that, but thanks, Lisa.
I'm a forty-nine-year resident of the Dells, and I participate, participated in just about every cherry festival, either as a participant or observing, and it was by far the, one of the best well-attended cherry festivals that I've seen in most of fifty years. So it was a good job and a good time for all. We'll continue those efforts, won't we? All right. Yes, I agree with you. All right, we are now up to the consent agenda number nine. Items of routine and non-controversial nature are placed on the consent agenda to follow the city council to spend its time and energy on important items and issues. Any counselor may request an item be pulled from the consent agenda and be considered separately. Items pulled from the consent agenda will be placed on the agenda at the end of the action items section. And on the consent agenda tonight, A, approval of the April eleventh, two thousand twenty-two regular city council meetings, B, approval of the April twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-two regular city council meetings, and C, resolution number twenty-two dash zero-one-eight, adopting the city of the Dells approved sick leave payout policy, and D, resolution number twenty-two dash zero-one-nine, which, which I don't have it in front of me.
Supplement.
Supplemental. Okay. Up, here it is. All right, accepting the appointment of Mayor Mays to the HB forty-one twenty-three Advisory Committee. All right. We have, we have a motion.
Mr. President, I would move that we would accept the consent agenda as amended.
As presented.
As presented, thank you.
I'll second that.
We have a second, we have a motion, any other discussion on this item? Not hearing any, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion is carried. All right, we'll move on to number ten, Contract Review Board actions, number eight, contract number twenty-two dash zero-zero-six, scenic drive stabilization phase three. Okay, you're up.
Greetings, members of the council. This project is for completing the final two hundred and sixty-five feet of the thousand and seventy feet total soldier pile retaining wall system that we were installing for the East Scenic Drive stabilization project. Back in two thousand fifteen, we completed the, the first phase of that project, and in two thousand and nineteen, we completed the second phase. And again, this will be completing the last phase of the installation of the soldier pile retaining wall system. We will then, after completion of this project, will be looking at, start funding for the fourth and final phase of the project, which will happen in a couple of years. That fourth and final phase will be for reconstructing the entire roadway segment and cross-section from Jefferson Street to Esterway. That project will consist of rebuilding the roadway, putting a new surface on, installing new curb gutter and sidewalk on both the north and the south sides of the street, and then installing a sidewalk on the south side of the street, and then a small little portion of sidewalk on the north side of the street down by Esterway. But again, that'll happen after this project's over and in a couple of years from now. For this project, we had a bid opening, and on April twenty-first, we received two bids for this project. Crestline Construction submitted the low bid at five hundred and forty-seven thousand and seven dollars. They were actually the contractor that did both the first phase and the second phase, so now they have the, the low bid for the third phase. Our, we reviewed the bids, and all the bids, or their bids were deemed complete. We had a engineer's estimate for that project for the amount of five hundred and sixty-eight thousand three hundred and seventy-five dollars. And then for the budget, we had, the city had budgeted five hundred and sixty-four thousand nine hundred and forty dollars, and that was out of Street Fund thirteen line code seventy-five ten. So the low bid for this project from Crestline Construction came both under our budgeted amount and under the engineer's estimate. So that was good news compared to the way budgets and some of the projects have been So that was good news compared to the way budgets and some of the projects have been coming in recently. So with that, staff recommends that the city authorize the city manager to enter into contract with Crestline Construction for the East scenic drive stabilization phase three project. Contract number 2022 dash 006, an amount not to exceed $547,007.
Do we have any questions for Mr. McCabe? Anyone?
I have one.
Okay, go ahead, please.
Just simply, what's a soldier pile retaining wall?
It's a retaining wall where they, they pile drive like I-beams into the ground. And then they'll have like a board system that goes and, and puts the walls in between those piles that have been driven into the ground and it creates that retaining wall system.
Thanks.
Any other questions? Mr. Randall, any questions?
No.
Okay, so we, may I have a motion on the floor, please?
I'll make the motion to authorize the city manager to enter into contract with Crestline Construction for the East scenic drive stabilization phase three project. Contract number 2022 dash 006, in an amount not to exceed $547,007.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Right, we have a motion and a second on the floor. Any other discussion? Then we'll take a vote, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we're moving on to 10, 10B, thank you very much. Contract number 2022 dash 005, the Dog River Pipeline Replacement Timber Removal. Mr. Anderson?
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, members of council. First, I want to draw your attention just real quick on the issue title tonight. It's actually, will be contract number 2021 dash 005, I think the agenda says 2022. And with that, one of the elements of the Dog River Pipeline Replacement Project is removal of the timber along the pipeline corridor and in the needed staging areas to clear room for construction of the pipeline beginning this year. In April of last year, the city awarded a contract to Y East Timber Services to serve as the city's timber management consultant for this element of the project. Since then, Y East has worked with the city staff, coordinated with Jacobs Engineering, who's a design engineer for the project at the US Forest Service to develop an RFP or request or proposals for this contract to provide the needed timber removal services. Bill services will include the cutting and removal of trees and downwood from the pipeline corridor, the construction age staging areas and the logging decks, the decking of the logs that are created and the processing of slash that will later be disposed of by the Forest Service. Want to point out that there won't be any general, excuse me, any revenue generated for the city because this is timber that's owned by the Forest Service and we are just cutting it and decking it for them to sell later by their own means. We developed this solicitation as an RFP rather than a straight low bid price because we wanted to ensure that we selected a contractor that had an understanding of the project design criteria established by the Forest Service. They had, we wanted a contract that had the technical capability and the capacity to complete the work and then do so in the timeline that we needed the work to be done with and that they had enough of an understanding to be able to do the work and no clients with all the permits have been issued for this project. We scored the proposals that were received by using staff from both Y East and city staff. And the scoring was 55% of the points were allowed for the evaluation criteria and 45% of those points were based on price. We received two bid, or excuse me, two proposals in the opening on April 26. All four reviewers were unanimous in their rankings and the proposal from Bounds excavation was scored as being the best proposal received. It was also the lowest cost proposal coming in at $469,650. Within Fund 53, the Water Reserve Fund, validated $11,201,726 for the Dog River Pipeline in the current fiscal year. For those who are keeping track, this is a slightly larger number than I mentioned in the last staff report. And that's because in the last report, I forgot to account for the funds that had been added through a supplemental budget to the available budget for this project. The current budget had been allocated for $500,000 or the project budget had been allocated $500,000 for this work. So there are adequate funds available for this project. With that, it's staff's recommendation that the city council moved to authorize the city manager to enter into contract with Bounds excavation in an amount not to exceed $469,650 for contract number 2021 dash 005, the Dog River Pipeline Replacement Timber Removal Contract.
Very much, all right, questions? Any questions of Mr. Anderson, go ahead.
I've just noted saying that at least on this one, there's three zeros after the period, so.
One of those. Myself and it's, it's on that side of the decimal, it doesn't affect the price.
I don't want anybody to think it's 469 million.
No.
Other questions, yes?
Dave, would you remind us what approximate round numbers or, or figures? What's the scale of the timber removal? How long of a corridor are we talking about?
So we're talking corridor, there's three and a half miles long. We're going to be utilizing a, an existing Forest Service dirt road for as much of that corridor as we can to reduce the footprint of the project. The corridor that we're allowed to clear where we're going through standing timber is 25 feet wide. So three and a half miles long, 25 feet wide.
And they can't drop it across the pipeline, presumably.
The one of the benefits of moving most of the project into the road is it gets us away from the existing pipeline. It helps protect it to remain in service while we're doing the project.
Appreciate it.
A timber that's down, is there a potential of any value of that timber?
Also, the downwood doesn't have value. You know, even standing timber, if it's killed in a fire, only has merchantable value for about one year. So if you got to move in, if you're going to do a salvage sale really quickly.
Other questions? Mr. Randall?
Done.
Excellent. Move on. Well, I'll take a motion on the floor since we've asked our questions, any motion?
I will, I will move to authorize the city manager to enter into contract with Bounds excavation in an amount not to exceed $469,650 for contract number 2021 dash 005, the Dog River Pipeline Replacement Timber Removal Contract.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
Good. Councillor Randall, second. All right, any other further discussion? And let's pull it for a vote, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
All right. We are now moving into executive session. The city council of the Dallas will now meet an executive session pursuant to ORS 193 dot 66602A, which allows the council to lead an executive session to cover the employment of a public officer, employed staff member or individual agent. Representative that the news media and designated staff shall be allowed to attend the executive session. All other members of the audience are asked to leave the room. Representatives of the news media are specifically directed not to report on or otherwise disclose any of the deliberations or anything said about these subjects during the executive session, except to state the general subject of the session as previously announced. Notice if maybe made an executive session, at the end of executive session, we will return to open session and welcome the audience back into the room. All right.